Call meeting around the county committee's order. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Good to see some young faces in here. That's not very often that we get the true future heads of the community in here to come and see what's going on, so that's good. First item of business is approval of last meeting's minutes. Motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we need to make any additions or corrections?
I'd like to add the water board, Brian. Jim, Brian Bolt is here to give a report. I would like to add him if we could, right under Kevin.
Okay. Any other additions? We have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Kevin, you're up.
All right. Okay, it's the time of year that we do the spring maintenance on our motor graders. That's our train three Moff. We might have to do three this spring. So the filters and oil are gonna cost around forty-three hundred dollars from both Napa and Butler, mostly from Butler. So we need a motion to go ahead and order those oil and filters.
Move to the room.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to allow Kevin to spend forty, well, to order filters for forty-three hundred dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And the two tractors that were rented from John Deere this year, the total for the two of them is nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five. Now, they had a misprint on that. We're getting back one thousand five hundred and ten. That was my bad. I guess a motion to go ahead and pay for those two rentals.
These are the same, basically same ones.
Yep, exactly.
This is actually paying for this last year's rentals then, correct?
No, it's this year's. They're actually here now.
Oh, they're coming over. This is just gonna come in here.
Okay. So the fifteen-ten that we got back, that's just 'cause less hours than we...
What happens is we generally take the, there's two categories, horsepower ratings. We usually take the light horsepower rating versus the high horsepower. Well, they're out of place now where they fly the market with these small ones, so we get the big ones. But they reimburse us for the extra costs.
Okay, so it's still doing the purpose of giving you...
It's easier for them to resell the big ones.
Very good. Any further questions on that one? Okay, then we have a motion, the second, to allow Kevin to pay. So it was ninety-nine fifty-five minus fifteen-ten, is that what you said?
Correct. We actually have to pay the ninety-nine though.
Oh, okay, you just get a rebate.
Yeah, exactly.
Perfect, so then it's for nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Roll call, please. Lightphone?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Okay, so I talked to most of you about this earlier. Soper has a semi tractor for sale that I'd like to buy also. That side dump that we got from them, it requires a wet kit, and we don't have a wet kit on our truck, so it'll take forty-five thousand to put a wet kit on. I looked at the one they were using to pull it with, and they had a really good price on it, so I decided that we'd just use that tractor and trailer to do whatever we need to do with it. So for twenty-four thousand, they have a two thousand five Peterbilt. So we need a motion to buy that.
Move to the room. Second. We have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? This is to pay for it?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, the second. Roll call, please. Brown?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Lightphone?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Okay, then our paving bid on Ramsey County Three, I kind of like Paul talked about a little bit of this, but yeah, I'll let you go ahead and start on this, Paul.
Okay, so we got the four bids to the DOD. Mayor construction was low. They were about forty-two thousand dollars over the estimate, which worked out to be about two point eight percent, which is, this kept her neat, what meant to the bid prices that came in. The bidder was second at seven point six over the estimate, which meant about a seventy-one thousand dollar differential between them and mail. So the state sent out to notice for the work or whatever, I think there's a resolution in the packet to approve the order against mail.
The resolution had gotten it back, and it came too late, but hold, sorry. But anyway, the state has sent us basically an agreement saying we accept that bid, and now we have to sign this resolution saying that we accept the bid.
And this goes from seventeen through...
Yep, the ten miles, hopefully coming by. So includes the paving, and then we had to include those eighty ramps and stuff.
And that can squirt around to happen, right? Is that all? We're gonna leave squirt around town?
Yep. That's part of the bid, or included in the bid.
That way they're not coming up with tons of money, are they?
Right. The city, you mean?
Yeah, right. They don't have the money.
No. They're gonna give us some, but it's just a token more than anything. But they agreed to just give us like a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars or something like that, just for good prices, whatever you wanna go.
Right. They don't have it for sure.
No. We would've broken if we had charged them their ten percent or whatever.
Well, it's good that it's only a one-time cost, so that helps.
And it was something the state was making, the handicap part, it was something the state is making us do. We can't do other than... It's either that or stop at the city limits, you know. We didn't wanna do that, so...
Right. Is there any reason, either of you seen, that we wouldn't wanna sign with the low?
No, I think that that's a very, very good price at today's economy, so yeah.
I was gonna say, why did we put, when did you guys put the estimate together? How current is that?
Uh, we got it in December, I think.
Okay, so I mean, even since December, that's, you know, the market's moved quite a bit, I would think, so it's gotta be a pretty decent bid.
Right. You're worried about this, is the oil.
Yeah, well, this just been Friday, so...
Okay. Move to the room. Second. We have a motion, the second, to allow the chairman to sign the resolution excepting mayor construction company, a low bidder, to do the Ramsey Three overlay. Any further discussion?
It's actually the chairman and the auditor, but yes.
Yes, okay.
Chairman, that's not your decision, sorry.
We're prepared.
Any further discussion hearing done? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, then I had a budget of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for new motor graders, and it came in at like seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I got about a hundred thousand to spend on equipment there. That would include the twenty-four thousand for the truck we just bought. When I'm looking into buying a new skid steer, it's gonna be under a hundred thousand, so I would have to go through the whole bid process. I just need to call three companies and get quotes, so I guess I'd like permission to go ahead and pursue kit melts quotes. Probably do Butler, Ardio, and Bobcat.
You have one now? You have a Bobcat now?
No. We have a Bobcat now. Uh, it's got tires. We'd probably look at one of the tracks.
How old is it?
Two thousand and four. But it's very low hours. We'll keep it, have two of them, so we got one with tires, one with tracks.
Did something come up or change that we didn't have it in the original budget? Just out of curiosity.
Well, I was thinking about doing it next year, the skid steer.
You just got the additional dollars that are sitting there, so it could push up you.
That's my understanding.
Also the sixteen thousand dollar trailers?
That I got on a different line item, I guess. I see where you're going with it. I also had a line item for the pickup that we're buying, and rakes for the motor graders, but I can, I paid for the side dump part of that one.
It all comes from, yeah, lots of funding. I'll make a motion to allow Kevin to go look for bids for our skid steer.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried.
So the one last thing I have is the year-end report. It's up this big report here. So probably I don't have too much of a chance to look at it, but it's a lot of information to digest at once, but... I guess I'd just ask if we got any questions more than anything.
Anything you should be looking at?
Um, I always look at the very last column and see what that piece of equipment has cost us per hour, per mile, and look for the high ones. You know, either maybe we should think about getting rid of the high ones or something like that, you know, but... Right now, the only one that really jumps out is that we got a little sand spreader. All we use it for is crack sealant. The second crew uses it for crack sealant, for sand. And then for our main sender that had a breakdown, we'll use it for their time also. So it doesn't get a lot of hour time, is why the cost is so high. You still pay the insurance and...
We used it this year though, right?
We did use it this year, yes, a lot. And we certainly need it for crack sealant. But now this new truck, and that's gonna be here this week, this new truck, it's gonna replace this little, it's a single-axle four-wheel drive sand spreader. It doesn't have a, it's got a sand spread box on it.
So before we think about getting rid of it, maybe we should see how it goes in the season at least, to give it a... How you feel like we do this year?
Yeah. Yeah, I will hang on to it for another year, just to get it worked into the system and that type of thing, you know. Or, nah, I'm an equipment anyway. First two pages, that's on there, it jumps out, actually.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, when I was looking at it, the cutting edges cost on the newer blades is way more? Is it just 'cause the, we're using, is it a different style of cutting edge? So it's costing more, or do they just go through more, or...
They went through more.
They just went through more?
Yep.
'Cause I just noticed that it's like almost on like the one on the Devil's Lake, it's three times the cost on cutting edge versus like the one in Fender for Webster.
That's true.
And they're doing similar miles, so I was just kinda curious. Maybe, it depends on road condition and stuff like that, obviously, but...
Cutting edges really depends on the operator, how far you stay from the ground.
Yeah, depends on how much your crew and dirt do.
Yeah.
That makes a big deal.
So these aren't hard cut.
I'll dry this, yeah.
They're not the hardened ones, right?
No, these are the ones that got the, it looks like a screen, you know, and the screen looking mesh that they flip them around so they wear evenly, type of thing. Then this third page is the goals. And I guess you don't really have to jump out. Look at the big numbers there, and it probably had some kind of project, like a crack sealant project, or a culvert replacement project, or something like that.
You'll not kill the horse on the cutting edge, but are we gonna have enough for next year to deal with it? Are there enough to keep on the hill or anything?
We will, the curved ones, definitely, but the perforated ones, or whatever you wanna call them, we probably got enough for half the year. So we'll be good until July, August, something like that. So like the biggest number on that one is nine A, and we have put two culverts in on that, so that's probably a lot, big portion of that. We did some spot gravel. Hold on, that's eighteen starting at that. So that's the one that we did put the culvert in on the, by the wall, it's probably a line on nine, out. So that gets expensive as I'm gonna do the gravel projects. We're gonna need culvert projects. Crack sealant, you can see that's kind of what we actually spent on.
Well, the crack sealant projects cost a lot, just simply depending on where they're at in the county, because we're running from...
Travel time.
Running from Devil's Lake to grab oil, up to, all the way up to nine.
Right.
Costs a lot of money to get up there.
Three pieces of equipment. And then the last page is our projects. Like our bridge removals, our chip sealing projects. Just more for information than anything. I mean, that's what the cost for bridge removals. Well, if you take these home to look at or whatever, anytime you have a question, just feel free to contact me. Try and ask me questions.
Like Commissioner Lightphone said, they're very handy to have, you know, if you want to create information or...
I think it's, like I was talking about, the need to keep that additional, that ten years. I mean, you just add up the line items on what we put in the roads every year, and it's a pretty tremendous amount of money just to try to keep our road system in decent condition.
That's what we're supposed to do, right?
That's the goal. But I mean, in a non-paving year, it's a million and a half bucks, just to do gravel, and just to do maintenance, culverts and everything else to keep the system in decent shape. It's a lot of money.
Yes, it is. But they're needed.
Yeah, no question.
So we do figure the wages into those talks too, so just say, no wages, they're pretty good enough. So I have, unless you have something, what do you wanna add, Paul?
If they wanna touch, yes, on the Kelly Four box culvert, I think you mentioned it previously, that it was looking like, we probably have to have a decision date next year, but it's probably gonna move to a fall day update as well. So it'll definitely be next year for construction on that. That's moving to date.
So everybody understands that rather than pick that new cul box culvert this year, it'll be in twenty-three.
No, it's because they, they're just so backed up trying to, trying to do more.
A couple, yeah, I mean, if you open it, if they had middle to make bay, it probably still be, the suppliers are just backed up, the material shortage is...
Well, the bridge has been there for sixty years. One more year is probably gonna kill the same area.
We'll really be caught up in crazy work.
We're sitting, you feel lucky.
That's what I'm hoping.
Anything else for us?
That's all I have.
Okay, well then, let's go to the water board. Thank you, Kevin.
Well, the water board has been pretty quiet so far. We're not seeing anything come in for us to work on right now, and a couple of complaints that we have, that have been ongoing ones that have been up over the years. We have to figure out a way to deal with them, but as far as our biggest things that we have on our radar right now is that Edmore Cooley or Ramsey County Ten project that's been talked about ever since the Edmore Cooley assessment was voted down. There's really no new information on that right now. Most of the guys that are interested in it are spending the winter down sales, so don't expect to hear a lot until everybody starts showing back up here pretty soon. So, you know, as far as the board is concerned, the project is out there, but until they bring it to us on a, with a petition, there's nothing for us to work with, so just kinda wait and see and what the people involved, they're going to do with it. Guess the other thing, you know, hiring our new office manager, Stacy. She's been coming on board pretty quick. The more she digs into stuff, getting the computer set up, the more questions of, you know, the way things were done and how it should be done better are coming up, so we're dealing with that hopefully a other month or two. We've got, gotten our office into a lot better shape than it was. Until you knew which questions to ask, you didn't know what problems we had. But she was able to dig them out, so that's been a pretty big thing for us, I think. So glad we found her when we did. Other than that, there, probably the one thing that'll might affect our budget or something in the future, talking with Jeff, you know, we do the stream crossing standards for Kevin on the big culverts and crossings. It doesn't sound like the state is able to get them done timely anymore. So I know we have a couple in progress that we hope to get back before Kevin needs them, but I guess we've talked in the past, we may need to start having those done privately through the board, probably with K L J or somebody, so... Well, I guess we'll be talking about that as the season goes through this year and see if the state gets in better shape, but I don't anticipate them being able to do them timely like they have in the past, so I guess we'll talk about that as the year goes on, but... Probably the last thing is, you know, where everybody was dealing with the COVID policies and all that. First thing after we got Stacy on board was she was out for a week by close contacts, so we're working on getting the office set up so that she can work remotely, which I think is a good thing no matter what, just from everything that happens and probably happening in the future. One thing we found out when doing that is the phone lines here in the courthouse are a little bit lacking to be able to have a call come in and transfer help to somebody working remotely. So there are ways to deal with that, and obviously, some are better than others, but I guess I would encourage you guys to consider updating the courthouse if it came up in discussion and fit into a budget someplace. To update the phone lines here would probably help everybody that's here out a little bit. That's really about all I have, so if there are any questions or...
Any questions?
No.
Did the Edmore project got voted down?
Uh, last year, the Edmore project, it got voted down. Then the guys up there are still, you know, some are well in favor, but some are lukewarm. I think the board could've probably handled it a little better. If it would've had a person in the office, I think it would've went better. I guess I would...
Just as far as the information getting...
Right, I think that's a lot of it. There's a lot of questions that people weren't able to get answered. You know, people, a lot of assumptions are floating around out in the countryside. And having this extra time, I think, is probably good for it. You know, a lot of people are thinking about it a little differently. You know, some of the stuff that was never mentioned is, guys in the middle say, well, you know, this water doesn't affect us, why should we vote for it? Well, one thing we could ask is how much it's affected Kevin's budget over the year of having to have, how we need to go under water, having to fix culverts all the time. That's what we're trying to fix with this project, is get an orderly flow of water, so you don't get water backing up because of cattails someplace, and then, okay, now finally got high enough, it's all coming. We can get an orderly flow where the local water leaves and the stuff comes from the north. You can fill a lot more water through if it can flow over two weeks versus a one-week period, so... So we might ask Kevin to dig into some numbers we can use. I don't know if it's something that's easy to find, but I guess if it comes up for a vote again, we plan to have a lot more information out there and try to bring out some of these other things. If everybody looks at how it affects their own pocketbook, they forget about, you know, what did it cost them when the highway was closed for two weeks? What did it cost to drive around an extra forty miles? So hopefully we can bring in, you know, if they bring us a project, we can put together a whole package for people to understand and see what it costs everybody, not just, you know, what they're gonna be paying themselves for the assessment.
Paul?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well then, we'll move on to unfinished business and go into ARPA discussion. Committee met again, what was that, week and a half ago?
Friday following our last meeting.
Yeah. And we talked about what our plan was going forward, and then late last week, I was able to get out some materials. Did you get those?
Yep.
They look good?
Okay.
Like a one-page description of what we're looking for, as well as the actual application form for receiving ARPA, well, consideration in front of the committee. So I'll keep everybody apprised as any applications start coming in. I'm gonna work with Steve tomorrow to get it up onto the county website, and then talk about it during coffee time and that sort of thing. So we'll hopefully start seeing some proposals come in, and we'll let you know what's going on with that. I mean, I don't think I've forgotten anything.
Uh, August thirty-one deadline?
Yes, August thirty-one deadline.
And then we'll meet after that and hopefully have the proposals to the commission, depending on date, either first or second meeting in September would be the thought process.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I saved everything as the timeline, so... We'll keep everybody informed as we go along, but we're expecting quite a few applicants, so it should be interesting to go through that and see what we get. Any questions on ARPA? Okay, then we'll move on to discussion on compensation study. Do you have anything for us?
I don't know if I have much more to add other than the discussion we had a couple weeks ago. I mean, it's basically comes down to...
Whether or not we wanna move forward.
Right, right. Just, I guess, a few points really is, you know, like we've all seen where the, what the environment is right now with the labor market and people, they call the great resignation that's happening right now. A lot of people are changing jobs, although I just read an article where seventy percent of those people are saying they made the wrong decision. They can, they're going to greener pastures, so maybe that is coming to a halt. And then I did, just doing a survey from an outside entity, you know, a third party, you know, you don't, you would think you probably wouldn't have any conflict within, if people know on that, you know, it wasn't somebody within doing the compensation survey, but again, it's down to your decision, obviously.
What was that, right thing, again?
Twenty-six thousand.
You're gonna get needed?
I mean, you look at the county's turnover, it doesn't show that it's really needed, but that can sure turn in a dime. You know, it's, it's been up for discussion, you know, since I've gotten here, that's for sure.
It'd be nice if we had a code that we could see what the...
The old crystal ball?
See if they know.
Like you say, we haven't had much turnover. Pretty limited.
Our benefit package, I mean, it's outweighs most private sector employers, I mean, so that is...
What do you think, that's huge?
I don't like that the price tag is as high as it is, but at the same time, if it's something we only do every five to seven years, and you break it down that way, on top of the fact that our total payroll in a year is, oh, I don't even know what our total payroll is. It's gotta be multi-million dollars. Twenty-six thousand dollars over a five or seven-year span is peanuts to make sure we're paying people right, I guess is how I look at it. I still don't like the fact that it's as expensive as it is, but I think it's beneficial to make sure that, 'cause I, you know, since I was sheriff three years ago or whatever, I had multiple questions about when are we gonna, you know, people asking, thinking they need to, you know, that we weren't in the market necessarily.
Right.
And, you know, when are we gonna do a salary study? Because I think that that's gonna show that my position's working, that type of thing. And I didn't have major stand on at that point over money, it was something to say, whoa, and we think we're in the right place, but we don't know for sure. At least this would give us something to stand on.
Well, and ultimately, I think it's about what's fair also, you know, make sure that we're, you know, sort of within reason. I guess I, from my perspective, I'm more opposed to opening Pandora's box, or kicking hornet's nest, or whatever metaphor you want, but I agree with Adam. It is, it is a fairly shocking price tag, but I don't think it'll ever get cheaper, so...
Brian, do they come in the building to do it?
Most of the, they won't be in the building.
They won't come in?
No. A lot of it'll be them reaching out to, you know, other counties, some other sectors, to give the presentation, they would come up for cost, obviously. But we can always, you know, when it comes down to the final, we can always phone the manager, whatever, but...
You see the fear of them coming in and saying that we're way behind, and then all of a sudden, this traps us. You know, could we create where we don't have anybody leaving now, but we do the study, and all of a sudden, it's like, huh? I don't know, you know, you're kinda, I agree with you too, it's gotta be about being fair, but...
And in the past, we wanted to, you know, compare this county with other counties of similar size. Not cats and Grant Ford. Let's not go there.
And, yeah, they won't go there.
You sure?
I'm positive, yeah.
I took a lot of direction last time, and stay away from that. I know that.
Yeah, that's, no, they specifically said that they stay away from...
I understand where you're coming from with that, but I think the argument could be made that we actually have a higher cost of living here, comparatively to cats or yearly year. I mean, there's a reason why we're paying a, like when the sheriff was in... there's a reason why we're paying a, like when the sheriff was in the last time, our starting deputy's forty-two thousand, but Eddie County's forty-seven or forty-eight, because they got, they gotta get people. So the argument can be made that Fargo can, or Cass can pay less than us because there's all kinds of people that want to go to Fargo.
Their jail is way behind us.
No, I know they are, I'm just saying that the argument can be made both ways. I agree, though, that we should be compared to places like maybe Barnes and Stutman and Walsh and, you know, things of that nature that are comparable to us.
I understand, Adam, when you say we spread it over five, seven years or whatever, that's fine. But is this year the right year to do it when people just don't come out of the house and go to work? I mean, they don't. They're just numerous, and even in our own community, people stay home, they can make it. I don't know, if you want to look at that, I don't know. If you're going to spread it over five or seven years, fine.
Well, I think the hardest part about this discussion really is, like, you know, if you were in the mode, and I'm not suggesting we do this, if you were in the mode where you did a salary study every year, you wouldn't be scared about what you're going to find because it's probably pretty substantially similar to the year before. It's when you get these wider and wider and wider gulfs of time that you go, "Oh, my gosh, what happens if we look?" You don't want to look in the freezer anymore.
People are leaving now, but we got a lot of...
One of my fears is, I agree with you guys as far as we ought to be fair. What happens if we lose these ten mills? We can't convince the people. Are we going to put ourselves in trouble? I don't know, but do we wait to see?
Let's put it off, see how that goes.
Do we wait to see, okay, we let this go through and it goes our way, you know, like, okay, it's good, and then we come back and do the study?
We can do it anytime, sure.
What do you think of that, Adam? Or do you, you know, I totally see where you guys are going with it. Yeah, we do the study.
We're only two and a half months old.
But is it the right time?
We're only two and a half months from the vote, so we gotta wait that one.
I think we can wait, it's just a matter of, you know, if we do that, we're basically saying that we're not going to be using incentives, but it'll be a fine there. And then if it doesn't happen, then, and say we can't inform the public and get it passed, then okay, then are we talking after November, are we talking twenty-twenty-four, are we talking, I mean, you know, like, you know, if we kind of stumble, push it, that would work longer even. Which, I'm not saying that's good or bad, but that's just the math that goes into it, I guess.
So is this company that you have here, is this the only one that can do the study for twenty-six?
Fire research, that's, they're it.
What all the other counties are using it?
Yeah, so the Asian state counties is used, the other counties is used.
There's some, been some counties in North Dakota that have used it?
Yeah.
I think there's, on that list, it's probably what, eight or ten?
Billings, Hurley, McKenzie, Montreal, Richland, Sargent, Ward, and then Association of County...
So I think we'll get good numbers from them, you know, they'll be adding things of that nature. It's just a matter of, is it the right time to do it or...
And they look at job descriptions, you know, to make sure they're comparing apples to apples, you know, for a specific position.
Have you worked with one of these outfits before? No.
Have you reached out to a county that...
No.
I've talked to a few. Jeff, did you talk to some, I think? I've talked to a few, there was one that they didn't like what they saw in it. What I got out of it was they were a little out of line, they thought with the wages and the adjustments that they would have to make, but...
And that's kind of the opinions that I got from the commissioners that I spoke with is that some were pleased with the outcomes and those that were not, it was because their salaries were way below what the study came back at.
But my question was, did they wait a long period of time? And you guys are saying, were they out fifteen years before they did the study? So they kind of trapped inside us too? We don't know that, you know, we don't have...
Some of them were oil-producing counties that needed it done because of the high wages at private sector, whereas Canadian out there, others just did it because it hadn't been nothing about how like the position worked.
When was the last time we did it? Seven, eight years ago?
I, Candy couldn't even remember, she thought it was...
Oh, yeah, it was.
Nothing like that.
Do it again, you start.
So I guess, from my perspective, I see two ways going about this. We don't want to do it now, I mean, we can either give the authority to do it or I think we should agree tonight that it's put in the budget for next year at the very least. You know, in the mayor's budget. One of the two, because I just don't want it to be kicked to an indeterminable amount of time in the future and doesn't become.
Yeah, because we put it in the budget, at least we know it's not going to not be...
It's always very convincing.
Hey, and this isn't anything that you had within your budget for this year, this dollar amount?
No.
This has come out of...
General fund.
Something out of general, yeah.
Oh, yeah, COVID dollars should be something, because that affects a lot of people. You know, it's a lot to manage.
Still question.
What happened? Something happened.
No.
It's a commodity. I think Candy figured it out.
So I guess, from my perspective, the right answer is to do a salary study. I guess I'm fairly agnostic on whether we do it now and use general fund or COVID dollars or we instruct Mr. Singer to put it into his budget for next year, just with the understanding that it's going to put us back in the year, obviously. I just don't, I don't want to keep discussing it and not come to a conclusion.
Not in your budget, right?
I'll give up my salary, let's...
Thank you.
That was, I don't know.
Really, I just don't have it. I like doing that. Want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, just to see what we do.
Right, right now?
Yes.
General fund dollars?
COVID, wherever we get by.
COVID, general, one of the two. Sounds good, don't make it extra complicated.
Let Candy vote. We'll let, we'll let Candy figure out what it is. How about that?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
All right.
Motion is carried.
Hold on, you might have to clarify that.
Was it a nay?
I think so. That was a nay.
That was a nay.
Just wanted to make sure, Steve's talking about Commissioner Brown.
That's fine. Okay, well then we'll look forward to hearing what comes of all of that. Do you have anything else for us, Brian?
I do not.
Okay, well then we can move on from unfinished business to new business. And Mr. Weigl?
Yes, I'm Larry Weigl, with me is Jason Albert. We're here representing the Lake Region Sportsman's Fund in Devil's Lake. If you're not familiar who we are, what we do, we're a local organization and we're not affiliated with any state or federal organizations. We have about twelve active members. And we do things for the youth in the Lake Region. Some of the projects we do is we work with CNY, the Shooting Sports thing, we give them some money when we have it available. We do the pheasant release and that kind of thing, but all our interest, all our work, all our funds, Devil's Lake area. That's what we do, all our work and spend our money. But anyway, our January meeting, we were approached by an elderly that's a resident that's eventide about fishing pond at Ruger Park. So we kicked it around a little bit and we thought this is a fantastic idea. I mean, these guys could walk there and go fishing. If they aren't able to walk, you don't have to worry about driving, it's a two-block ride on the bus. If they want to go fishing, you wouldn't have to be climbing the rocks, slipping, going to all the steep ramps, that kind of thing. Plus, I think a big benefit for the youth, ride their bikes over there, cast a line a couple of times. Parents wouldn't have to worry about going south of Walmart, getting lost in the gravel road or going behind your bike and who knows what could happen. So we thought it was a great idea, pursued the city about this, talked to the city engineer. He thought it was an excellent idea, he had some contacts with Game and Fish. He visited the Lake Access Committee, Park Board. And we've had about three of these Google meets over the phone in front of your computer. Game and Fish had three people on the call. Last, like I said, Suzie was on there, Terry Wallace, Mike Grafstra, myself. And everybody's thinking this is a good idea, it's a good community project. Game and Fish showed us some diagrams, some designs and some ponds they've completed throughout North Dakota through the years. And they said to do this the right way, the pond needs to be nine feet deep. That way it's not a big cattail slough. So we went on, drilled some holes, threw out some backslutters, and we're four and a half feet out here, so it would have to be dug out to do this. With the people that are on board with this, Game and Fish, they'll commit forty-five thousand dollars to this project. City has committed thirty thousand, Park Board's committed about the same amount, thirty thousand dollars. None of this has gone out to bid yet. The big expense probably is going to be one of these long-armed backhoes in there to dig that out. We have some contacts with the National Guard, but maybe if they had a piece of equipment like that out west of nineteen there, maybe they could come in and do this project, but that's not for sure yet. So I guess what we're doing here tonight is, is we're wondering if the county would want to be a participant in this program if we're short cash, because this comes to a bid. I'm probably going to be in that meeting with everybody else and laying a point of finger at me and says, "Can you come up with the money that we're short here?" So we're going to have to try to find the money, and people always ask for other grants available, some of that kind of funding. Those take time. We have all this momentum now, we have all this money committed. If we do the grant process, we're going to be into next year and we're afraid we're all going to lose some of this momentum. Game and Fish could say, "We had this money earmarked for you last year, you can come and get it, you can get it from someone else." If we can't get it, city's on board with their commitment. They're going to have some changes at the board level of the city. We don't want to slow this down, we think this project is going to be done by the end of the summer. If it's late summer, we probably won't stock fish this year. Game and Fish has committed to stocking bluebills, bringing them in from Woodlake and keeping that pond stocked every year. Some of the things it required was access to the pond with a truck. City's committed that they got a crew coming there, do some street overlay, that they would beef up that area where the truck went back into. City would do a lot of the riprap work that needs to be done, they have the equipment, they have manpower. They would do that, kind of save on the expenses. So I guess what I'm here to ask is, is the county willing to participate? And if you are, do you have a dollar and all that you think you could contribute?
So do you have bids coming in, just at all? Anybody in particular that's coming to you?
My graphic staff's going to do that, because it's going to have to be bid because of the dollar value that's offered. But right now, he was thinking maybe the most expensive part of this is going to be that he'd contract you with that backhoe, so he's going to see if, like you said, we could get the guards to do it. Otherwise, Draymond is supposed to be going over the regular backhoe, but that's just, that's something he's working on right now. But with the Game and Fish commitment, that kind of surprised me a little bit. And the city being on board, the community, it's been on the news, you've probably heard about it on the news. I've been approached in the street and they think this is a good project that we've taken on since our annual pheasant release that we do for the youth hunters. The community's excited, think it's going to get a lot of use. Ruger Park's a busy place, people coming in, bringing kids in swimming, they could fish. They're in town doing family picnics, reunions, they have another option, you know, take the kids fishing. You like the idea, question?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I'm the state's attorney, Bo Cummings, I'm not a commissioner, so I don't make any policy. Do you know if it's got any kind of federal protection? It's not like a wildlife refuge or flyaway protected slough?
No, you don't have to worry about that. The wildlife portion of that...
You don't have to, I have to.
Is on the north side of that gravel road that goes by Midco.
Yep.
That, I understand is what we've been told, has got wildlife easement to it.
That's correct.
But the park, no.
Okay, that's where the question sprang from, so thank you.
I think if there was a wildlife easement, I don't think that Game and Fish would even...
Yeah, they wouldn't touch it probably.
Then again, they would not have...
Pretty safer.
I'm pretty sure they wouldn't even say they could.
It's a good project.
Oh, I think it's a great, great project, yeah.
I think it's a great idea too. When do you intend to start taking bids?
Can't give you an answer on that, I know Mike is working on that. There's going to be some stuff yet that we need to meet with Game and Fish on that because they've got some rules with the money that's attached to this to kind of do it their way. Once bids come in, we're going to have roundtable discussion like this with all the parties that are involved. You're going to be in this, one of your commissioners would be more than welcome to sit down. Were you guys in the access committee?
Right here.
Were you at the meeting when that was discussed, like a month ago? Okay, all right, so...
I like the idea of it.
We'll probably invite you to go and sit in on that.
The only thing is, I wish we had bids, so that if you're...
The guard's going to do it, right? National Guard can do that, right? Sure. They're going to fire up the pole.
I'm not going to say that, because I could get in trouble.
No, we don't know that they can commit to that either, but it was just something that we threw out there, you know, that was there.
It's very possible, but I don't know if they'd be able to do it somehow.
Right.
Does Mike have any estimate of what he thinks it might cost?
That hundred thousand number pops up, that's projects Game and Fish have done throughout the state in the last few years.
Of this kind of build?
Yeah, and we're talking like a pier, you know, a pier against the fish.
And we've got a hundred thousand to integrate now.
Yeah, yeah. There needs to be some work with maybe a parking lot area, making all that safe. There was some discussion about bathrooms, but we'd like, we got momentum, as I said, we want to roll with this thing, you know. And if they come to us and say, "Yeah, Sportsman, we need twenty grand on you," well, the ten members are, we're going to be busy raising that kind of money, but so I'm not saying it can't be done.
Ongoing expenses, how are those going to be divvied out? Has the park board taken all of it and they're willing to do that?
Well, the conference calls I've been involved with, the question was brought up, where's the money going to get followed through? And it sounds like, you know, it's a park board property, it's going to get followed through the park board.
Yeah, no, that makes perfect sense to me, I was just making sure that we weren't, like, on the path to a joint powers agreement.
Well, that's going to be a surprise.
And then Game and Fish is going to stock it every year on their pond.
Every year, yeah.
Basically, if we could, there might be some ongoing costs with maybe cleaning or riprap work or something like that, maybe...
It sounds like the city is willing to undertake all that, they got the equipment. And like, Mike was at our last meeting, says they got people coming in to do this overlay on some asphalt. They would beef up the area where Game and Fish is going to have to cross the road to get there. We like the idea, and I think the community, everybody that's bumping in the street about that, they like the idea.
I like the idea. Couple of questions.
If I can answer one, I will.
Okay. Bluebill, are they native to Devil's Lake?
I don't think there is bluebill in Devil's Lake.
So the east ditch that flows...
Yep.
Behind the cemetery would have dumps into Devil's Lake. And I think the overflow from that pond would go into that east ditch.
Yep.
So they have an issue when Game and Fish comes and puts non-native species into a body of water. It creates some issues. When you were discussing it with the city, did they have any concerns over putting larvicide in the pond? Do they do that now to control mosquitoes?
That has not been brought up in any of the conversations.
So I asked the question with Mike, the same question.
Yeah.
And he said that if they dig out the cattails, that actually helps control the mosquitoes.
So you're going to say if there's no cattails and the water's deep enough, they can move it, should be okay? And once you go nine feet or more, cattails?
Well, that and the fish eat any larvae, I would suspect. I mean, that's a food source for the fish and that's why you don't want to poison them, so.
The discussion was that it need to be stocked in, there's, there'd probably be winter kill, whatever survivors are, and it'd probably get fished up. We're going to encourage signage that says, "Catch and release," encouraged or something like that.
I think they have one of these at the park in Jamestown, and I think it's a pretty good hit.
Yeah.
I know they have, they have one in Langdon, it's a trout pond, and I think it's used pretty consistently.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Well, by making a commitment tonight, we're not saying that we're giving the money, we're just saying we'll go up to a certain level and then see what happens with the bids.
Exactly. That's all we're asking for tonight. Like I said, I don't have my homework that out, I can't come up with the dollar value that's going to say this is going to be twenty thousand dollars, or it's already committed, we don't know that. We might commit under.
And the reason we came so early was to keep the ball rolling if it gets going real fast.
I think it's probably safer for this body to say that we're committed to helping and without giving a specific dollar amount... without giving a specific dollar amount, none of the dollar amounts you just talked about scare me. So, you know, with without giving you a specific commitment, I'd just like to see what the bid comes in at.
Well, that's fair, because I wasn't looking for an exact dollar either, I just wanted, we're just here to cover our max, I guess, in case this thing comes in a little bit higher than we thought.
I happen to know the local board in Lakeview to help you out with some funding, too.
I looked into this pretty good already.
Oh, thank you.
Larry, Lake Region Community Funds?
We checked, we're looking at that, they might buy a pier or something like that.
They're coming out with theirs for twenty twenty three, and just because it's twenty twenty three money doesn't mean that you can't get on it. So I would definitely, because they raised ninety thousand dollars already, so there's going to be available funds, not get ninety thousand, you might get ten.
Yep, yep.
Is that the one that Sean is?
Yep, so make sure you get, the applications are going to be coming out, he made it sound like next month, but I'd be watching on there so that you get it in right away.
And the other thing is, is if you're willing to wait for some of this until next year, you can always apply for ARPA funds as well. We we've got ARPA funding that we're going to take project proposals for, considering, so. The only thing is, is as we mentioned at the meeting, that's not going to be awarded until August, well, September, probably.
Well, we like to strike when the area is hot.
Well, no, I completely, I completely understand, and 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 that's why I was saying, I think, you know, as a county, we're willing to look at what we come up with. I don't think there's any problem with that, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, if the bids come in and it's something we absolutely can't afford and we can't raise them, we're probably going to have to go through the grant process and.
You know what, I think that's why we're all kind of sitting here, because let's say the bid comes in, you're saying a hundred dollars, say it comes in at a hundred and fifty five thousand and you're twenty thousand, I mean, don't.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, we come up and say, hey, yeah, we're going to help you out to get there, instead of telling you an amount and then you still can't get there.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for an amount, I was just looking more less for a commitment and maybe we'll come and see what we can do.
I don't know, this question that comes in in that ballpark, that thirty thousand dollar range doesn't seem to be at all, either, I think it's a good project, so.
I think it's a great project.
Get some bids and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep us informed.
Oh, we will, we will, is there anybody in particular, should I contact you with what's going on, I mean, sort of in the
I'm cool.
Lake Access and you'll probably be sitting in on the meeting while we have a face to face meeting with Game and Fish people.
That'd be great, then I could keep you paid a farm.
Yeah, 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 no, we're going to have to take up your time here at the meeting, yeah.
I'll be cool with that.
Yeah, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, thank you for bringing new interesting ideas.
Oh, we're always up for an idea.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Visitors and delegations, anybody else here who wants to talk to us about anything? No? Okay, then, we'll go to portfolios and we will start with Commissioner Brown.
I talked to the sheriff and our municipal chair over there, and we've pulled in, decreased the staff up to fourteen and Captain's working on it.
Good, very good.
Something pretty positive. Team meal, we don't eat till. Anyone else, you good, I'm good.
Hey, Jeff?
Uh, well, we've been, uh, the news recently with the airport, trying to keep everybody informed on what's going on there. Hey, you know, it's not the the death sentence that, you know, when we first got that notice of termination or the termination of of services from SkyWest, you know, we've kind of took a step back and yes, it's bad, but it's not quite as bad as it sounded initially. Hey, yes, SkyWest is, uh, wants to pull out of twenty nine essential service airports throughout the region, throughout their their, uh, their service contract. They, uh, they are under contract with the federal government through the essential air contract. And we have them under contract till June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. That doesn't mean that we're not going to be looking for a new carrier, though. DOT is putting out a request for proposals right now for carriers to come in and service Devil's Lake Jameson. Those are the two airports that lost, um, the essential service contract with with, uh, SkyWest. So we still, uh, plan on moving ahead with our terminal expansion with the ARPA money that the airport received. We have a lot of irons in the fire out there with, uh, apron way and taxiway, although that did give in fifty one percent higher than what our engineer estimate was, so we decided to put that, um, off. And, uh, but there's other expansion projects elsewhere that we will be bidding soon. Our ARPA SRE, uh, fire support building will be expanded. Terminal will be expanded, um, you know, about three, thirteen million dollars worth of of, uh, improvements over the airport within the next three years, four years. Similar to the timeframe that we have with the county's ARPA money, we have to have it spent by twenty twenty six, so. But, uh, we'll be moving ahead with that and, um, so. But yeah, we will be looking for a new carrier to serve the Devil's Lake Airport, but we will not be without one, um, which is good news. So, hey, you know, the the news were kind of a little crazy. Last Wednesday night, we had a a meeting, a Zoom meeting with, uh, the folks from SkyWest and the Hinden Hudd and dropped the ball on us and said, by the way, uh, hey, you know, if they're correct and it's a truly a pilot shortage issue that is causing their, uh, them to want to pull out of their essential service contracts, um, that's probably a an industry wide issue. We may have difficulty finding a a carrier, but like I said, that's a a federal Department of Transportation issue, and they'll be putting out requests for proposals and hopefully we get, uh, a carrier in here that has a similar sized jet. We don't want to go backwards and go to a a single prop plane or a turbo prop or Billy Bob's puddle jumper or something like that, so, um, we want to continue to move forward in a positive way and and, uh, and you know, this is just a hiccup in the in the road, so.
I'll tell my uncle not to bring Rick Phil Flight Service back into passenger.
He's going to say he gets strapped to the wings of this airplane.
Well, and I think with with the enhancements that we're doing and the enhancements that Jameson's done previously, I think that the carrier would want to come in to serve Devil's Lake Jameson. You know, Jameson's, you know, has good passenger numbers, Devil's Lake has consistent, steady, good passenger numbers. We'd like, obviously, like to see those increase, and with a a big carrier, I think we could, so.
Absolutely.
Got a lot of things going for the airport out there, so.
It'll be interesting to see what comes of all of that, for sure. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Blackmore?
I don't have a whole heck of a lot. We've got four Devil's Lake and Social Services tomorrow, so I have, we haven't met since our last meeting. Library Board, we met, um, we are looking at adding, uh, a couple more board members because we were short board members the whole time, uh, so, uh, one of them will have to be appointed by the city. And then one of our county appointments, um, Sawyer, uh, said that he he hasn't been able to make meetings, it's been very difficult for him, so he's going to, we're going to have to have him tender his resignation so that we can reappoint somebody that says it has worked for him for a while. He was fine with that, he had already said that that's what he wanted to do, so look for that in a coming meeting that will be, we had a couple of people that, uh, applied. So we have, uh, people that will be more than happy to fill the position, so we'll have a name hopefully at the next meeting. Housing Authority, um, we met, uh, we're trying to get, uh, work through the process of, uh, husband kind of a pain, we've talked about that before, the funding and everything like that, um, but the money's there, but you have to go through a process to release money on on the on the funding, so. Tim's working through that process with his staff, we're fully staffed, which is fantastic. And hoping that, you know, our our occupancy rate has been kind of slowly trending down, so we're hoping we can get some people moved in when spring starts here, because nobody wants to move when it's forty below. So we're hoping to get these, get some people in the in the apartments and, uh, fill up completely, but who's to come on that, I guess, other than, oh, yeah.
All right, and Commissioner?
Chris Polk? The car's office, they converged back to nineteen seventy five in three months, so that's going well, as far as in that office and converting.
Digitization?
Yep, digitization. Treasurer's office, they're over ninety percent as far as the money collected from taxes and, um, the money market, because I can see it, it's good. I agree with that.
Yes, yeah.
And then she said that if we want to have the burner manning to come back in, if they would do that, we've got to give them a couple of weeks, you know, in advance, so if something, we want to come back.
Was was that about July, August that we did that last year?
I was going to say, probably a year.
A year, well, and I think we even discussed that with them at the time, when we were bringing them, if they come in and.
I think tell them, yeah, my yearly update would be good.
But, yeah, so, I think that would be a good idea to have them at our, either our general door, or maybe not. I guess we need somewhere in that.
Yes, and then the Fair Board in the Lake Axle, we did not meet yet, that's coming after this, so I'll have a update on that next week.
Very good, there you go. Okay, I'll keep mine short and sweet, the only thing that I have is, uh, I know that District Health interviewed five candidates to become the next administrator of, there were eighteen applicants, which is quite a few also. They they did five interviews last week, so I expect an announcement.
Actually, the two last week and one today.
Oh, is it?
And one next Tuesday.
Well, then I was waiting. So that's still in the process and.
But they're. Hope to have a decision by the end of next week.
Good, well, just like, there's good qualified candidates that are interested, so.
Yep, and that's all I have. Anything else for the good of the order, any other announcements or anything? Hearing none, for adjourned, thank you all very much.